Welcome to the September 5th, 2023, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I would ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Squalia, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Craigin.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. Um, we have, I was told there was a registrant for a remote public forum, but that person does not appear to be in attendance at the moment. So if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak during public comment, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and you may speak for not more than two minutes. I ask for everyone's patience. We're using this new timer system and figuring out the process as we go.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stanley Young, Fitchburg, Mass, resident. Dear fellow citizens, I want to share my strong opposition to petition 22023 as presented by Council President Zarella. It's a matter of physical responsibility and fairness to our community. In the 2024 mayor's budget, City Clerk Bolata has already seen a substantial salary increase this year, 6,233 to be exact. Her salary now stands at an impressive 97,864. Now Council President Zarella is advocating for an additional $2,000 raise. We must ask ourselves, is this raise truly warranted? Or is it possibly a reward for a specific decision made regarding the preliminary election? Let's talk about that decision. The choice to limit our votes to just one in the preliminary election effectively taking away our second choice raises concerns. It seems to favor a particular political party, the Democrats. Moreover, consider the mailing sent out to Clerk Bolata, which led to removal of 6,850 active voters from the list. Shockingly, these voters have not been reinstated on the active list. As of August 4th, only 801 names have been rectified. I believe, as many do, that our city is headed in the wrong direction. We desperately need prudent fiscal management to address these issues. It's up to us to make a change. Your voice, your vote can steer our city towards a brighter, more responsible future. Stand up for fairness, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. Go out and vote for the change our city deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment at this time?
Mary Jean, 499 Electric Ave, Fitchburg. I'm speaking about the communications. In the upcoming preliminary action, some crucial needs need your crucial attention. It's not about just casting one vote instead of two. It's about the story behind it. Our city clerk made the call to limit your choice to one candidate. You'll see vote for one.
This is not an item that is on the agenda.
It is. The preliminary is there.
It is not.
She referenced Section 40 of our city charter, which talks about aiding the voter in the direction.
Please take your seat or shift to a topic on the agenda.
She claimed the past prelims were led to be honest or elections have involved.
You are out of order. Please sit down.
Doesn't serve anyone. Yes, I will. But it still stands the same way. We have a vote.
Please sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, for limiting the choice of the people.
Please sit down or please leave. Thank you. Any further public comment on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed with our scheduled agenda. We have announcements. I'm sorry?
Jessica Jacobson is on the agenda.
Ah, yes, thank you for reminding me. Ms. Jacobson, you may introduce yourself and speak on an item on the agenda.
Yes, I, my name is Jessica Jacobson, 33, Crescent Heights. I'm speaking on the appointments and reappointments of, on the agenda for tonight. I think we really need to be looking at the performances as well as any conflicts of interest and also try to push for any residents to be on these committees because we have a lot of non-residents on these committees. It should be a focus to have actual residents on these subcommittees. I just want to speak about one conflict of interest that is on that for reelection appointment, which would be Dr. Knight. She is on there for a reappointment for the Humans Right Commission. I've brought up several complaints about her being on the Humans Right Commission, but on top of it, Humans Right Commission should not be a political position. On top of it, we shouldn't be forcing compelled speech onto minors, which is something she pushed, pushed in the Humans Right Commission. And then on top of it, she's been too busy in her position as city, the school committee to even read a lot of the emails about the issues that were going on in the public school system because she was in school herself. We should be looking at their performances and not just pushing these people for reappointments and really check to see if there are conflicts of interest or performance issues. I know I brought these performance issues up about her multiple times. So if somebody could really look into it before just pushing these, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We have announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group, sorry, just a moment. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, September 7th, 2023, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in room 203 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. The Heroes Live Forever Memorial Road Race is seeking sponsors for the Heroes Live Forever Memorial Road Race in memory of Templeton EMT Tracy Farazza, who I understand did some work in Fitchburg at one point. This event will be held on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Narragansett Regional High School in Templeton. For further questions, email info@givethenumeraltothose.org. The Fitchburg Preliminary Election is September 26th, 2023. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The last day to register to vote in the preliminary is Saturday, September 16th, at City Hall from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The last day to request a mail-in ballot for the preliminary is Tuesday, September 19th, at 5:00 p.m. And the last day to request an absentee ballot for the preliminary will be Monday, September 25th, 12:00 p.m. There is no report of the Appointments Committee at this time. Report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, one question back here on the, on the election. If you're not, if you don't have a home, where do you go and vote to sign up? See if you're homeless, but you want to vote in the election.
Madam Clerk.
You would still be able to register to vote? The address that they would utilize as residential would be 718 Main Street, City Hall is the residential address we provide. If they have a mailing address, they can add that as the subsequent address of where all their mail would go to. There's a place over at the Market Basket Plaza that offers mail service for them. So some utilize that address, but the physical residential address would be 718 Main Street, City Hall.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes, Counselor President Zarella, I saw that we also have early voting. Is that also for the preliminary or is that just for the general election?
Both.
Both.
If you so vote on it this evening.
Do you have that information?
Oh, we're gonna vote on it, okay. Yeah, it's on the agenda. And actually, I do have some other announcements that I missed. I apologize. Citizen standouts continue for Leave Labor in Lemonster. Come join us and show UMass Lemonster Hospital Labor and Delivery is an essential service for the health and safety of all our residents Wednesday, September 6th, 4:00 to 5:30 at the intersection of Electric Ave and South Street here in Fitchburg. Stratton Players announces the 99th Super Season with a free presentation, WCV Radio for Your Eyes, an original comedy set in a radio station written and starring, written by and starring Jeff Van Ambergh and Sally Craigin, at the Lemonster Library, Thursday, September 14th, at 7:00 p.m. You can email strattonplayers@gmail.com for more information, and walk-ins are welcome. There is also Second Chance Animal Services will be hosting a low-cost Fitchburg Pet Vaccine Clinic in memory of Jeffrey Stevens of Lemonster. Registration is now open. The clinic will be on September 23rd at the Fitchburg Fire Department Headquarters on North Street. The event, which offers low-cost vaccines, including a $5 rabies vaccine and microchips to help Fitchburg area pet owners care for their pets. This event is organized by Be Positive Therapy Pets and Friends of Fitchburg Dogs Incorporated and is dedicated to the late Jeffrey Stevens, who co-founded the Fitchburg Vaccine Clinic series in 2011 and was a devoted pet owner all his life. Registration is open to all pet owners in any town. Visit secondchancesimals.org/Fitchburg. And there are copies of the flyers on the back table.
Bumper stickers.
And bumper stickers, yes. Bumper stickers for the birthing center, the Labor and Delivery.
Mr. President, do you have any more announcements?
I am done with announcements, but Counselor Fleming appears to have a question.
I want to go back to the homeless voting. How do you prove that someone's lived in the city for six months? Because don't they have to live in, don't you have to live in the city for six months before you can register to vote?
I don't have answers to that right now. I'm sure the clerk does, but since it is not an item appearing on our agenda, I would encourage you to contact her outside of council hours.
It was an announcement, which is why I asked.
I will relay out to the whole commission because that question came up a couple of weeks ago, so we have it from the Elections Division. Everybody has a right to vote. It doesn't matter if they're on a bench in your city, if that's the bench they're claiming, they have a civil right to vote. So, but I'll send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. President, and you forgot one big, one big announcement. The guy to the right of me.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. I had it written down and got bogged down in the other announcements. Congratulations to Counselor Derek Cruz on his wedding over the course of our August recess.
Welcome to the club.
Thank you, thank you very much. Everyone's telling me how hard marriage is, but it hasn't been so bad so far.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, Counselor Boishman, report of the Committee on Records.
Before I make a suggestion on the Committee on Records here, I have one, I ask one question on 21323. Some of the counselors asked me about the emergency defect.
How about we talk about that when we get to that item?
Oh, well, I'm gonna appoint, make the appointment and say the records are in good standing as of right now, but there's one question.
So 213, what page are you on?
This is the records of July 18th.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead then, I'm sorry.
We just like to know where we stand on that, the emergency deficit. Remember, we gave the mayor okay to go for an emergency deficit and how we stand?
So the only question at the moment is whether the records are accurate. We can't address any questions about items that were taken up at those past meetings at some other time. It's a perfectly valid question. It's just not on our agenda for this evening. Only the validity of the records is on the agenda at the moment.
All right, all right, then the records are in fine hands, they're good.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I, I can satisfy the counselor's request.
Oh, I have no doubt that you can.
Very, very brief, but.
Well, it is, it is your privilege as mayor to address the council, so if you wish to.
Counselor, I was updated this morning by the DPW Commissioner. He's using certain grant funding that's available to us right now to address some of those rain issues that occurred. We haven't yet tapped into the stabilization fund. I know we have authorization to do that. What we're gonna be doing very shortly is we're gonna meet and talk about what we could use from that stabilization account to make repairs more permanently now. So that meeting will happen probably this week sometime.
Oh, okay.
We'll have more information for you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the report of the committee?
Move to accept the report.
Second.
All right, seeing no objection, it is unanimously approved. We have communications from His Honor, the mayor, multiple appointments and reappointments. And with consent of council, since there is a large number of them, I will waive reading of each individual appointment, and they will all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Any objections? All right, they stand referred to the Appointments Committee. And then we have communications from the city clerk.
Let me just get that out. So to answer Counselor Schultz's question, yes, we, I met with the Board of Registrazione on August 30th for their recommendation to opt into early voting for the preliminary as well as the municipal election. The state has signified that early, last date to register to vote is always 10 days from the date of election. So our City Hall will always now have to be open on Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00, the Saturday before the election, 10 days before, because they didn't think to count to a Friday or Monday. So it's always gonna be 10 days that Saturday. So we said, well, we're gonna offer the early voting. We're gonna be at City Hall anyway. So we're gonna start Saturday the 16th, and then it'll be Monday through Friday, the following week, basic City Hall hours, 8:30 to 4:30, that Monday through Friday. And I flickered back and forth on whether to host the early voting, and I think especially with our demographic, it's very confusing for our voters if some elections we offer it and some we don't. And I don't want anybody to feel our local election is not as vital and important as a state or a federal. So that's why we are, I would like to not offer it at all, but that's why I'm offering it, so we're consistent for our residents, so they understand that there'll always be early voting before the elections.
Counselor Squalia.
So will the early voting locations be here at the 700 Main Street Legislative Building or, or at 718?
718 Main. Yeah, we're gonna use the West Conference Room, so they'll walk right in, vote, and then go right out.
For both the preliminary and the general, will you use the West Conference Room?
I, I believe, I want to see how busy the primary is, if I need this location, but even the state location, we only had 130 people come, so to book this facility for that amount of time, it really is feasible to do it in a conference room.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the early voting schedule.
I make a motion, will you approve it?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the early voting schedule attached to our packets. Counselor Dina Tally.
I don't know if this is within order, but there were some statements made earlier that are, quite frankly, lunacy, but can we, if not now, at some future point, clarify for the people, unfortunately, who had to stomach listening to that, that think that we're trying to do something that is illegal?
We will. We will.
Okay.
I have, I have the intention of taking it up when my petition comes up later.
Okay, thank you, because I, I feel bad for the public that had to watch that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposition, passes unanimously. Communication from the Economic Development Committee, Counselor Van Hazinga requesting a meeting to review the 2018 Strategic Development Plan, including development activities and ongoing implementation of the plan. Do you have any remarks on that, or would you just like to refer it?
Nothing serious. It's, it's been five years since we've come up with the plan, so it's speaking to our economic director, Mary Jo Bohart. We thought it was a good idea to have a check-in to see where we're going and how we've done.
All right. This does not require a vote. It just had to be put on our main agenda in order to be referred to Economic Development because none of our committees can schedule their own meeting independent of a council referral. So if no one has any objections or comments to make, that will stand referred to Economic Development to be scheduled at expression of the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a communication from the Planning Board regarding their, their action on item 12823. I'm going to ask that we hold that until 12823 comes up in our reports. We also have the 2022 Annual Report of the City Clerk's Office, which unless the clerk has any remarks that she would like to address to the council, that will be placed on file.
Just thank you for the great year.
Thank you. And then we have the Public Works Committee. Counselor Fleming.
Thank you, President Zarella. The Public Works meeting met on July 25th, and what I'm asking is take this, take the whole agenda items as a whole to vote on, but I just want to add to 12823 that that is going to be held based on the comments from the Planning Board, which still also have to go to property and back to Public Works. So that is gonna be held. So I just want to take the, the committee petitions as a whole. Hold on it as a whole.
Any objection to waiving the reading of the report?
Move to accept the report of the Public Works Committee meeting.
Counselor Schultz.
We have a couple of residents here on one item, the Public Works. Would they be allowed to speak to that at this time?
The time to speak to that would have been public comment. Because, because there is not a public hearing on the item, I apologize, it's, I've gotta have the same rules for everyone, but any residents are certainly more than welcome to speak to counselors after the meeting or outside the meeting. Counselor Dina Tally.
What petition is this referencing?
It's 19323.
Counselor Schultz.
It's 19323.
193?
19323, right at the top of the page.
Okay.
The berm, okay.
Yep.
Counselor Fleming, did you?
That will be, is held, so it'll be coming before Public Works again. Date to be determined because we have the preliminary election on the date that Public Works would have been held, so we're gonna determine a date for that.
For the benefit of the members of the public, could I ask that you let us know what the, what the reason for holding it was?
Yeah, I'll go back and just.
Yeah.
This was the berm. Sorry, I don't recall, it was so long ago.
Remember why?
Because the, the whole berm and the whole street is not, not there any longer, so it'll be like this.
It was, it was a big job.
Yeah, it's a big job, yeah.
So it might be something where we're waiting on further input from DPW?
Yes, DPW.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion and second to, or no, I have a motion. Do I?
I have a question.
Counselor Schultz, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just want to, if, if we could get an update on 12723, because at the meeting, we were, we were gonna contact, I think the council, the, the chairperson was gonna contact the school department and send a letter to the school department?
I haven't done that yet.
You haven't done, okay, all right. I just wanted to, we heard back from.
Nope, I have not sent that yet, we were.
All right, so I have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, did you still want to ask a question?
No, it was answered.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have two orders to be referred to Finance. One is 21523, order that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department Support and Incentive Grant in the approximate amount of $219,574 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support salaries and/or provide repair and enhancement to the E911 service system in the police department. And 21623, order that there be in hereby is appropriated the sum of $800,000, same to be charged against the FY 2024 tax levy and credited to Fitchburg Public Schools for the purpose of supplementing the FY 2024 budget approved in June 2023. And, Mr. Mayor, you indicated you would like to address the council on this?
A brief statement, if you would, Mr. President, thank you. Counselors, I'm asking for your support on 21623, which is an appropriation seeking to supplement the FY 24 budget. When constructing the budget, please know that we have followed a very conservative process. At the time council voted to approve the budget, we expected growth and room tax revenue to come in much stronger than the finance team originally anticipated. In fact, new growth will be not less than 945,000, some 319,000 more than the anticipated, more than was anticipated in my budget. Similarly, the rooms' tax revenue is now known to be not less than 1.355 million, approximately 454,000 more than the 900,000 in the budget. Additional funds in the amount of 46,000 are also available from the state. All of this taken together, we can easily fill the gap on net school spending, providing the schools with the $800,000. I would also further ensure everyone, the budget remains conservative in its estimation of income and expenses.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselors? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, these are referred to Finance. I apologize.
You give me all your depth here.
Did you have something, Counselor?
I'm tempted, nope. I, I was going to suggest suspension.
That would be up to the council.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on, this is only for 216 or for both?
Both.
For 215 and 216, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds majority?
Absolutely. Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
It passes by 11 members.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, motion to approve 21523. Second.
I have a motion and second. On the, this is 215 specifically?
Yes, and it's on a grant that we received. My only concern about the grant is I'm an advocate of regional dispatching, and you heard the mayor come in front of it, come in front of the council claiming that he can't get help and that they had to go and hire, pay people overtime, or they take the job and they still can't. My question is, why are we gonna invest this kind, I know it's a grant, this kind of money, when Lemonster just built the state-of-the-art dispatch center to handle regional stuff? That's, that's my only concern. If we can't get the help, you, you heard the mayor numerous, I mean, that the mayor, the chief, Ernie, come up in front of us and tell us he can't get the help.
So Counselor, you may recall that the context of him coming up to tell us that was when he asked us to authorize further civilian dispatchers to solve that problem.
Right.
He also explained at that time the reasons why, in his professional judgment... the reasons why, in his professional judgment, regionalization would not be to the benefit of a city with Pittsburgh's characteristics, given the call volume they handle and the call response times that they need to maintain. Certainly, you know, you are more than welcome to ask the question or to oppose it on that basis. But those, those issues were addressed by the chief the last time he addressed us.
Of course, you want to keep everything in-house. And I'm one to pro advocate to keep things in-house. But when you cannot get the help to manhandle that and you've got to give civilians overtime to work there, then we have a problem. And the other thing is, with the state-of-the-art and the way I understand it's going to work, there's not going to be a delay in time. We have never tried it. We want to keep everything in-house. And I have no problem keeping everything in-house. But if you can't get the help, then it's telling you in black and white, put it where they, where they get the help. And they get modern equipment and better equipment.
All set?
I'm on, I yield the floor to my fellow counsel.
Counselor Giannatali?
Okay, so first of all, as the president said, Chief Ernie explained to us that what he came before us to do was to rectify the shortage in manpower. That was the solution he proposed. So to say that we can't find the help, that's not true anymore because we enacted a fix for that problem. Number two, this E911 grant is a staple grant we get every year. And this is to update and repair our own equipment that we just heard is not good, like the land of milk and honey next door. Congratulations to them on their new police station. But I also heard Mr. Mazzarella in one of his two-hour chats he does in his office, he's got a lot of time on his hands apparently, that they're not regionalizing their dispatch. The coverage of what they're covering in the new service is more regionalized for their department. They're not regionalizing and having Shirley and, they're not, they're not doing that. So, again, for anybody watching these meetings, I apologize. The level of information that is thrown at you that isn't true is astounding to me. Lemmonster's not regionalizing their dispatch service. The chief Ernie proposed a solution to his issue that we fixed. And this is to repair and replace his equipment that we were just told isn't superior. That's why we're using this money, to make it superior. I feel like I'm teaching my three-year-old here, my four-year-old. Thank you. I'm sorry. I just can't. It's unbelievable. Thank you.
Counselor Squalla?
Just to clarify some concerns within the Pittsburgh Police Department Dispatch, there is a staffing shortage. We currently have, as of one month ago, and I've heard two weeks ago as well, we have four of the required 12 in the dispatch that we want. So we are backfilling that with overtime with dispatch, civilian dispatchers, but we are also backfilling that with overtime from police officers. And we, in some instances, are pulling police officers off the street to fill the dispatch as we need. Thank you.
Counselor Boeschman?
Mr. President, I'm not looking for an argument, but I want to make one thing very clear to you. When I pick up the newspaper and I read in there different towns are going to be going to that regional, I read what the paper says. I never talked to Dean and I never said I talked to Dean. But I read that in the newspaper, that they were going regional. They were going to have different towns in their community go regional. Shirley was one of them. And the surrounding towns around them. That's why they put the state-of-the-art over there. And they put 17 miles of wire in there. So question that is, so I don't give false information. I'm only going by what I read in the newspaper and what I'm told when the chief is here. And he says he doesn't have the help. So that's why I get upset. All right, thank you.
Counselor Giannatali?
Chief said he doesn't have the help. That's why he was here, to fix it. And he also said in the meeting, that isn't getting told to the public, that it's going to take months before we get to that point. It's going to take a while. Just like with the Commissioner, Public Works, when he had a staffing issue, he didn't say, "I'm here tonight and tomorrow I'm going to have 15 people right at the door." It takes time. So I hear a lot of criticism, no solutions, which is usually the banner over our building here. Lot of criticism, no solutions.
All right.
Move to approve 21523?
We actually have a motion, I think, already before us. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition. Motion carries 10 to 1.
Motion to approve 21623?
Second.
I have a motion and second on 21623? Any questions or comments on 21623? Do I have a motion? Oh, no, I do have a motion. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? Motion passes unanimously. We have an order, 21723, authorizing the city clerk to notify voters of the preliminary election to be held on Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is unanimously approved. We next have 21123. This is a lone order in final reading. So I'm going to try to do my motor mouth thing again. Bear with me. This is a lone order that the city appropriate the amount of $2,149,149 for the purpose of paying costs of the boiler replacement at the Arthur Longstrow Middle School located at 98 Academy Street, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the city may be eligible for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Pittsburgh Public Schools. To meet this appropriation, the Pittsburgh City Council is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the city incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city. Provided further, that any grant that the city may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 80% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. And that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. The treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes.
Motion to send to its third and final reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve this in its final reading. All in favor, actually, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Squalla?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cragan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Giannatali?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
It unanimously passes by 11.
Thank you. We have some further petitions going to committees. I'm going to set 2023 to one side for a moment. 21823, Liz Murphy, Economic Development Director, to designate the Planning Board as special municipal employees pursuant to General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20D. 21923, to designate the FRA as special municipal employees pursuant to the same law. Those both stand referred to Legislative Affairs. 22123, Counselor Boeschman requesting a loading area at the senior center at Elm Street adjacent to the ramp for loading and unloading food and equipment without receiving a parking ticket. And Counselor Fleming, to repair or replace the guardrail on the north side of Pearl Hill Road just before the Putts Bridge. Those both stand referred to Public Works. Now, Counselor Squalla?
Yes, I have a question on the, well, not a question, but more of a statement, I guess. On the 2023, so there were...
Getting to that, but...
Okay, well, I'll just say it anyway. There was concerns on the potential for unethical situation. And I don't know if it would be best to assuage concerns to hold this till after the election?
I don't think so, but we'll get to that in a moment. Counselor Fleming? Anything else? Anyone on this side that I missed? Okay. Now, 2023, I want to address this thoroughly before we send it off to Legislative, because there have been a lot of incorrect assumptions made about it. First of all, MGL, Chapter 41, Section 19G, the one preceding, the one referenced in this petition, already stipulates that a city clerk who is a member of the Board of Registars shall receive a stipend of $50 per, I forget how many registered voters.
1,000.
1,000, thank you. So 50,000 per 1,000 registered voters or significant fraction thereof, up to a cap of 1,500. We are currently below that cap. All 19H does is raise the cap to 2,000. So this year, if we adopt this local option, it will result in a net increase of zero in terms of stipends to the city clerk. At maximum, if our voting population were to increase to 100,000 next year, it would increase the city clerk's maximum stipend by $500 above the current maximum. That's what we're talking about here. Not a $2,000 pay raise. The 1,400, the approximately $1,400 that she will be receiving this year as a result of our current voting population is mandatory under state statute. We have no authority to approve or deny it, though frankly, I would think it would be wrong of us to deny it anyway. But that is money that is already owed to our city clerk. Furthermore, I would like to address some of the comments that were made insofar as they pertain to the job fitness of our city clerk. Because though I have no doubt that she is more than capable of defending herself, she shouldn't have to when the allegations are so far off base. Insofar as the voting for one person at the preliminary, that is what happens in every preliminary election in this state and across this country. I am unaware of a single jurisdiction that says that because two people go forward to the general, you vote for two people. That simply does not happen. This is not a decision that the city clerk made arbitrarily. This is a decision to continue the unbroken past practice of every preliminary election that has been held in this state since as far back as you care to go. And it, just out of an abundance of caution, she contacted the state to verify that this was correct procedure and was told that in fact it was. The same applies to most of the other claims that have been made, but those were the ones that I wanted to specifically address. Counselor Squalla?
Thank you for that clarification. So just to clarify again, in my words, the current, the city clerk currently gets a stipend for the elections based on $50 per thousand.
Yes.
So for our approximately 26,000 registered voters, the stipend is approximately 1,300.
Go right ahead?
No, I've never received a stipend. Pittsburgh has not given it. I was supposed to have it and never received it. I'm not asking for retro for last year. I'm just asking going forward. And if you watched the Lemmonster council meeting last week that you shared, they did the exact same thing with their clerk and took on the H and increased hers because their voter population had increased. So it's something that all, it's Mass General Law that we get. We never, I never received it in Pittsburgh. This will be my first time receiving that. And I'm not asking for retro, just going forward that I get the stipend I'm supposed to get for being on the Board of Registars.
This was a long-time oversight in the city?
Okay, so currently, we, G is mandatory. Section G, mandatory. We should have been paying. But we haven't, but we're going to. But now, all we're doing is increasing the cap. The current cap's $1,500, which would be a population of 30,000 registered voters. And we're increasing the cap to a population of 40,000 registered voters.
If we hit that.
And is that because we anticipate that many more registered voters? Like more than 30,000?
I would hope so, but I, but the reason for putting this forward now was simply that because this pair of statutory sections had been brought to my attention, it occurred to me that why not put it forward now while it is not a live issue, while it will have no immediate effect? As you mentioned, you know, for the purpose of ensuring that it doesn't appear to be opportunistic or anything, adopt 19H now to raise the cap when we're nowhere near that cap yet. So that, that way, as hopefully, we grow our population of registered voters, we don't have this artificially low cap that was set really quite some time ago and would be inadequate if we did reach 40,000 registered voters. Quite frankly, I think the $2,000 is inadequate for the amount of work that goes in, but that's not my call, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this matter? This is, reminder, we are not voting on this tonight. We are sending it to Legislative. Counselor Cragan?
Just one comment. I was really dismayed to hear the misinformation and I appreciate you bringing the clarity forward. State laws can be very confusing and it is easy to misinterpret. And I think that, you know, what I have done in my many years as a journalist is always go right to the source. So I didn't have a question about this because I was able to look it up. And I also want to say that our city clerk and our assistant city clerk are A+++ clerks. Having lived in a lot of other cities and towns, I can tell you that what this department does is remarkable, given the number of elections we have, the number of transient population that they, they get to deal with. And they do a superb job. And I appreciate Joanna always being very clear in her communication. And I would advise anyone who wants to come up here during public comment and make inappropriate and untrue allegations to take the time to walk into City Hall and speak to Joanna before doing that. I cede the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
My only question is, does this, your statements about, you know, being clear and making sure that you have correct information and not misinformation, I know that right now it's only addressing the city clerk's department. That was the flavor of the week. But how as we move forward with a greater transparency, how do we, how do we address that before it gets, you know, emailed to every current member of council and everybody who's running for office, that interpretation of misinformation that now has maybe, I don't know, tainted or discolored, I don't know, the effects or the ethics of, of this department? And I take that ethics very seriously when you want to bring forth information that could be detrimental to somebody's name and reputation. I take that with offense when statements like that get made or forwarded in an email to us. So I'd like to know how, how we go about addressing that civilly so that we're, we're better at this. Because I, I don't like that one bit. I don't like that it's being brought forth... I don't like that it's being brought forth more and more frequently.
So, counselor, generally speaking, the only remedy we have for negative speech is more speech. We need to ensure that we are getting good information out there, that we are responding civilly and matter-of-factly to bad information, and basically that we're just keeping on top of it ourselves so that we know what the facts are. In the event that some drastic misinformation were circulating that didn't pertain to an item directly appearing on our agenda, I would think that if a sufficient number of counselors felt that it was a problem to be addressed, we could include an item in other business at the end of our agenda to disseminate facts and ask questions. And that's what we're going to have to do, I think, because we, you know, and for very good reason, we cannot prevent anyone from conveying their message, no matter whether we think it incorrect or not, in a, in the public sphere. But we can take it as our responsibility to make sure that we are providing the antidote. Counselor DiNatali?
I, I just, I want to make sure that there's an apology made for you and your staff for what we had to see today and what we had to hear, because this is going against a person, not a position, not, not, not a policy. You were implicated in this. And I almost fell down my chair this morning when I saw the communications. That is what people do when they're desperate for attention, and they're falling down a hill and they're desperate to grab onto something. It's actually, take it as a victory lap, and everybody who knows about it is disgusted by it. So just understand that I don't speak for everybody, but I'm sure, I'm sure I do in this regard. We appreciate the work your office does, and it's a thankless job. And as the president said, the fact that you only get $1,500 or 2,000, depending on, that is a bargain for what you guys, not only during Election Day, but the weeks preceding it, the weeks after it, dealing with the state and the federal authorities in terms of certification, on top of everything else you're dealing with every day with the customers that come in. But again, that's what I've been telling you. It's the truth. That's what people do when they're desperate for attention. And it's sad, and the public will know that. Thank you.
Counselor Cragan?
Just a real quick, second bite of the apple here. Newspapers run something called a correction box when, when misinformation is put forward by a reporter, but I think just reminding the public that misinformation and accusations were hurled at around 7:25, and corrections started to be made around 8:02 PM. So if people are watching or people are posting, just start watching after 8:02 PM and, and hear the facts, hear the verifiable facts. I'm done.
Thank you. And so thank you to all of you, and I'd also just like to, you know, Counselor DiNatali reminded me, I didn't even touch on the thing that really boiled my blood, which was the suggestion that my petition was somehow intended to incentivize corrupt behavior on behar, on behalf of the clerk. I don't care if people want to accuse me of that. It's false, but I don't care. You know, I'm an elected official. I signed up for that kind of stuff. I signed up to have mud flung. But our employees did not, and frankly, I, I work with Joanna on a weekly basis on all aspects of city government, and I can say with absolute confidence that if I did ask her to do anything unethical or to make a decision on political grounds rather than on ethical legal grounds, she'd be the first one to report me for it. And that's exactly as it should be. I have rarely worked with anyone who has the level of ethical standards that our clerk Yeah, it, it takes a fair bit, as most of you know, to get me hot under the collar, but this does. Mr. Solicitor, did you have something you wished to add?
I just didn't want to repeat on television other defamatory statements.
Can't hear him.
I didn't want to repeat on television other defamatory statements.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so if with, without further ado, that will stand referred to Legislative Affairs to be scheduled forthwith, and that concludes our agenda for the evening.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.